Call me in order. All please rise. And I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on the business that's before us this evening. And please join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take your role.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman Begley. Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Basso.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman McRogan.
Okay. Special presentations. It's my pleasure tonight to, over the past two weeks, we've had a number of trees out in front of City Hall, and a number of not-for-profit Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, not-for-profit groups themselves decorated those trees. And then we had a judging by the people here in City Hall voted on what they thought were the best tree decorating. And I announced those winners Friday night at the tree lighting ceremony. But in addition to just getting notoriety, these three individual organizations get themselves a nice certificate plus a gift card from Andy's. So I'll call the three winners up here, and if they're here, it will be my pleasure to present this with them. The first, for third place, is Sir Tomah Star Services. Is anyone here from? No?
Yeah.
One gift card for all the kids.
Second place is Saint Alexander's.
We got a couple of kids.
Okay, my pleasure. First place winner is the Little Learners Preschool.
Thank you for all those who participated. It's a great thing we've been doing for the last probably five years or so. And we're getting a great turnout, and it's just a great community experience. Okay, under the consent calendar, I've got two things. The approval of minutes from the City Council meeting, November 21st, 2023, and approval of the payroll and voucher list for the period ending December 1st, 2023. Moved by Alderman Clifford.
Second.
Second by Alderman Violet. Rule call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Aye.
Okay. Under, there's no sealed bids tonight. As far as my remarks, first of all, I'd like to thank our own Joe Smith. Joe is, works for the Rec Department, and he was recently honored with, by the South Suburban Parks and Recreation Professional Group as the Man of the Year, Employee of the Year, I shouldn't say that to be sexist there, Man of, Employee of the Year. And with that, won a $500 prize. And Joe was gracious enough to actually donate it back to the city for us to use with our Rec Department. So I just want to thank Joe and congratulate him for his honor, but again, thank him as part of the city for donating that back. And then, actually, last weekend, we had a great weekend here in Payless Heights. We had the tree lighting ceremony that helped happen Friday. We had a great crowd despite the rain. The Shepherd High School chorus group was out there singing, got a little soggy, but they acted like troopers, and they were great. We had a good turnout both on Friday and Saturday for the Kris Kringle Market. And then Saturday morning, we had our annual, I guess this would be the third, fourth annual Christmas parade, thanks to Alderman Begley and Mrs. Courtney. And they had a great cast out there, a great crew, people from all over the city, and I think the kids were, I wrote on one of the floats as a, well, I was Santa Claus, okay, we'll leave it at that. And Mrs. Claus, she didn't really appreciate, but she was. And, but it's great having the little kids wave at you and just get out there and show that, you know, the city spirit. And we, it was just a great time. And so I just want to thank everyone who participated. We still, there's a number of things still going on in the city for, you know, the balance of the Christmas season, so please partake in it. As you see on our website, we try to publicize everything we have. There's a number of schools and churches that still have their, you know, craft fairs going on on different weekends, so, you know, please get out there and, you know, partake with what's going on. So, that being said, City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just two motions. My first motion is a motion to pass a resolution setting forth the schedule of the City Council meetings for 2024.
Moved by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman McGovern. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
My second motion, Mr. Mayor, is a motion to pass a resolution setting forth the schedule of City Committee meetings for 2024.
Moved by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman McGovern. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Anything else?
That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. City Treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Getting caught up on the Treasurer's reports. I will be reading the October 31st report tonight, and then in two weeks, I'll catch up with November. So, for the period ending October 31st, General Fund began the month with $5,496,755. Revenues to the General Fund were $915,250. Expenses totaled $999,963. Other source used $212, giving an ending cash balance in the General Fund of $5,412,255. Total of all city funds began October with $26,622,921. Revenues of $1,741,300. Expenses for the month were $2,827,739. Other source use, $112,156, giving an ending cash balance in all city funds of $25,648,640. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. With that, I need a motion to approve the Treasurer's report.
Move by Alderman Clifford, seconded by Alderman McGovern. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. City Attorney? Any communication? Anyone?
Just announcement. As you know, the Payless Lions were selling Christmas trees for their annual, help people, they're on Christmas, provides food, not to a bunch of families and everything. And I'd just like to say that as of today, we're officially closed. We sold every single tree in record time. I want to thank the high schools that were involved, Shepherd, Stag, Chicago Christian, and all those kids that came out that Saturday to help us. Without them, we couldn't have set that up to accomplish what we did. And I also like to thank an individual who's sitting here tonight, Mr. Dennis Hiker. He's sitting right here. He's an example of volunteerism in the city. All the hours he put in there, managing, running the lot, scheduling the thing, he was like the ever-ready bunny, never stopped. He was right there. And for that, I'd like to personally thank him for all he did for the club and what he provided to all the needy families at this time of the year. And on behalf, speaking for the Payless Lions, I'd like to thank everyone who purchased the tree, who came up and supported us, because if it wasn't for you coming up supporting us buying a tree, we wouldn't be able to supply the needed things we do at Christmas to those needy families. So to everybody in Payless Heights, Oak Lawn, Worth, whoever, that came up and purchased a tree, you have my personal thank you and our thank you from the Payless Lions Club. Thank you very much.
You feel you're a ready bunny. Here's the batteries.
Well, I'm a little worn out right now. I need a little bit of juice.
We need a recharger, that's right. All right. Any other communications? Citizens wishing to address the council? Anyone?
Good evening. I'm Susan Murphy Jania. I was here a few months ago, and I was, I'm here now to say thank you. And whoever helped give us the stop sign by the medical building, I didn't come sooner because I thought they were going to give us the two stop signs by both of their entrance and exits. They only gave us one. So if we could get the other stop sign, that would be wonderful. Number two, we're having a hard time with that nursing home. I've called and called and called. They will not put up any signs that say, do not turn right, because as we're coming out, they're coming at us, even though there's an island in between, and there's two lanes, one that goes east, one that goes west. They don't understand that when they come out, they're not supposed to turn left. So if they could just put a sign at the end, that's on the east end, that says, do not turn left, because they turn into people. And then you're both stuck in the island deciding what to do. And if they can also put stop signs, because they just peel out of there like no tomorrow.
Okay.
I would really appreciate it. But whoever was instrumental in getting that stop sign and getting all that garbage cleaned up along the way and getting the street repaired, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, actually, I know what you mean. I just, I went through there yesterday for another reason, but I was, I wanted to check out the paving and the other stuff we talked about.
Yes, yes.
And the guy started coming at me, too, so I don't understand.
No, it's scary. It really is.
Yeah.
My next question is, I heard that the sales tax is going up to 10% January 1st? Is that true?
In the business district, there's an additional 1%.
Okay, but that's where we shop.
Right.
And is that going towards the money that is being given to them to get their properties look better?
Well, it's going to the city, and we will actually run redoing the whole business district.
Okay, but as a landlord of my own house, nobody gives me free money, and I don't expect my neighbor to help me pay for it. How is, why is it that we're giving money that as the citizens of Payless Heights, you've upped where we shop, and got you're going to be upping that one extra percent? I don't understand that.
Well, see, some of those things, some of the improvements are, have to be done as a joint venture, and individual property owners cannot do it on their own and won't do it on their own in some cases. But in order to facilitate the beauty and, you know, make it more aesthetically nicer, shall we say, and then also the flow of traffic we want to look at and some other things. And that has to be done as a group, so that's the way.
But I'm concerned, is that 10% going to hurt our businesses?
No, we're still under, actually, every other suburb in the Southwest suburbs.
Well, I made some phone calls.
Yeah.
I mean, seriously, we're not, we're about equal right now with the 9%. Some are nine and a quarter. I made some phone calls after I found out that this was happening. So I'm still questionable of that. And then I know, we've lived here 29 years, and I thought 127th and Ridgeland, four corners, and I'm being honest, we're Payless Heights. Is there anything that can be done? I know it's unincorporated. They would get Patsies that's there?
No.
Nothing at all? Because that is ridiculous. That is such an eyesore.
I understand totally. I agree with you.
And I think it's going to hurt X's and O's and a few other businesses like Mama Vesuvios, because people are going to go there instead of sitting out there.
Well, just candidly, I have looked at inside that place every time I've driven by it, and I've actually only seen one or two people in the place. So I, you know, I don't see the overwhelming.
Well, I hope it stays like that, because that sign is getting bigger.
I understand. I understand.
Okay. I just didn't know, I don't know what goes on with unincorporated. I didn't know who controls it or.
The county.
So I would have to call County?
Yes, yes.
I will do that, thank you.
Okay.
Can you repeat your name?
Susan Murphy Jania, J-A-N-I-A. Live in Payless Point Townhomes.
Thank you as much.
No problem.
Anyone else? All right, Finance Committee. Oh, I'm sorry.
Harlan Wybota, 7640 West 135th Street, Orland Park. I came in this evening, and I noticed that you guys were talking about the city budget and things of that nature. Just so everybody understands, especially you, Bob, because you and I understand mutually, when I bought my house in 1990 in the city of Payless Heights, my property taxes were $2,400. At that time, I thought they were quite high, but they were what they were. In the year 2023, my property taxes are $12,700 for the same house. So everybody seems to be piling on. The school district gets to raise a little bit more, the city raises a little bit more. Everybody, after a while, you all don't think it's no big deal, but after a while, it just starts, my income has not gone up five times. Okay, so my income has not gone up five times since the time that I've been there. And so it's getting to where I have to move. And I've been here for 30 years, 33 years, and I don't really want to move, but I'm getting forced out. And I'm a working person. I feel sorry for a lot of Payless Heights, a lot of people on fixed incomes. So when you consider your budget, try to do as much as you can to try to restrain it a little bit. I mean, you hit, everybody's hitting us in all pockets, and it's starting to get very troublesome. Thank you.
Any other citizens? Okay, Finance Committee, Alderman McGrogan.
I'll do it.
Oh, you're going to do it?
Yep. Alderman McRogan isn't able to be here today, but he asked me to make a motion to defer item 11 to the next meeting, because he wants to have the opportunity to vote on the budget. Okay, item 12. I move to adopt an ordinance providing for the tax levy for the city of Payless Heights for the period beginning January 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2023, in the amount of $10,486,124.
Moved by Alderman Violet, is her second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion. Rule call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
And I move to approve a resolution proportionately reducing all levies except city corporate, library corporate, and police pension.
Moved by Alderman Violet, is her second? Second by Alderman McGovern. Discussion. Rule call.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Understand, if we don't pass the budget next time, we can't pay the bills.
Well, my understanding.
January 1.
Okay. My, my understanding from talking to Alderman McRogan is that he simply wants to be here when the vote is taken, which will be at the next meeting. So we're deferring it to the next meeting.
Okay, just because you can't.
I think, I think the deferral of the motion requires a vote at the next meeting.
Right.
Yes.
So that's the intent.
Okay. All right. But it went through a committee, all four Aldermen passed it. I think it's a little ridiculous that we're, we're holding the, the city hostage because someone's not here.
And I agree.
Okay. It is what it is. Public Safety, Alderman Basso.
Yes, Mayor, I have no items on the agenda this evening, but that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Municipal Grounds of Property, Alderman Begley.
I'll take that, Mr. Mayor. Item 14, I'd like to make a motion to approve payment for a 2024 Toyota RAV4 in the amount of $32,916.26.
Moved by Alderman Lewandowski, is her second? Second by Alderman Violet. Discussion. Rule call.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a new light pole at the entrance of Lake Catherine in the amount of $8,553.
Moved by Alderman Lewandowski.
Second.
Second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion. Rule call.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
And finally, I'd like to make a motion to approve payment for professional engineering services to Christopher B. Burke Engineering LTD for the Cal-SAG Trail at Lake Catherine Phase II project in the amount of $11,059.92.
Moved by Alderman Lewandowski, is her second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Violet. Discussion. Rule call.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's the end of the report.
Planning zoning, Alderman McGovern?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 17, we have a motion to direct the City Attorney to draft an ordinance to allow a 12-foot, 2 and 1/2-inch front yard setback along 70th Court in lieu of the required 30-foot front yard setback along 70th Court for the purpose of constructing and attached garage addition to the principal residential building at 12243 South 70th Court and contained within the PIN 24301280050000.
Second. Moved by Alderman McGovern, second. There's a lot of words to get out of it. Moved by Alderman McGovern, second by Alderman Key. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And number 18, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules and adopt the ordinance.
Moved by Alderman McGovern, is her second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Number 19, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance, bring a 12-foot, 2 and 1/2-inch front yard setback along 70th Court in lieu of the required 30-foot front yard setback back in lieu of, oh, I'm sorry, along 70th Court for the purpose of constructing an attached garage to the principal residential building located at 212243 South 70th Court and contained in PIN number 2430128005000.
Second. Moved by Alderman McGovern, second by Alderman Key. Discussion. Rule call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
That was, that motion was there on the waiving of the rules, correct?
Yes. Number 20?
Okay, number 20, Mr. Mayor, motion to direct the City Attorney to draft an ordinance to allow a 3-foot side yard setback along the northern property line in lieu of the required 10-foot side yard setback, a 7-foot side yard variance, which variance is limited to the distance or the length of the proposed detached garage located at 12718 South 69th Court and contained within the following PIN, 2431111014000.
Moved by Alderman McGovern, is her second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Key. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, number 21, I'd like to make a motion, direct the City Attorney to draft an ordinance for a special use approval to allow a B-1 use operate within an existing structure within a B District specifically an internal medicine clinic known as Integrative Health Group Limited, and allow the subletting space for a retail pharmacy known as Payless RX, all within the existing building at 13419 Ridgeland Avenue, formerly occupied by the First Midwest Bank, and contained within the PIN number 24323000390000.
Second. Moved by Alderman McGovern, second by Alderman Key. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I promise to be done.
Okay, Rec Committee.
There's a lot of things going on at the Rec Department, and I would encourage you to, to visit the website. So the website is Payless Heights REC, so PaylessHeightsREC.org. And the first thing you're going to, one of the things you're going to see on there is called the playbook. And you may have gotten this week a little postcard in the mail saying that the playbook, which tells you about all the programming that's going on, is available online, and you can go page by page and see all the different activities. You can sign up for different programs. And so there's a lot going on because of the Christmas season. So please go on the website and check that out. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you.
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
Please. A few years, a few years ago, we started a Toys for Tots box over in the Rec Center, and it's probably one of the greatest accomplishments we've done around here. It started out, we had two boxes in there. We are now up to seven that gets replaced every week. The generosity of this community is outstanding. And as Jack and I are both former Marines, we thank you.
All set. Thank you. Alderman Clifford, roads to construction?
No report at this time, Mr. Mayor.
All right, license permits and franchises, Alderman Lewandowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report this evening?
All right, Alderman Violet, water and sewer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve payment to Aries Incorporated for the 8-inch valve repair at, on 9 Parliament Drive East in the amount of $12,368.97.
Moved Alderman Violet.
Second.
Second by Alderman Key. Discussion. Rule call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
I move to approve payment to Aries Incorporated for the 8-inch sewer main repair at 6113 128th Place in the amount of $47,066.27.
Moved Alderman Violet, is seconded by Alderman Key. Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
I move to approve payment to M.E. Simpson Company Incorporated for conducting water distribution system leak detection program from October 30th to November 10th in the amount of $18,800.
Second. Moved by Alderman Violet and seconded by Alderman Key. Any discussion? Rule call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
I move to approve payment to M.E. Simpson Company Incorporated for conducting a fire hydrant maintenance and flow water main capacity testing program in the amount of $16,794.
Moved Alderman Violet, is her second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Key. Discussion. Rule call.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
I move to approve payment for professional engineering services with RJN Group for the 2023 sewer rehab design and construction and on-call underground infrastructure services rendering through October 27th, 2023, in the amount of $8,286.84.
Second. Moved Alderman Violet, is seconded by Alderman Key. Any discussion? Rule call.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
I move to approve a proposal for professional engineering services for the 2024 sewer cleaning and televising program with RJN Group not to exceed the amount of $78,900.
Moved Alderman Violet, seconded by?
Say the right figure.
Did I skip one?
You skipped 27.
You said 78,000. I think it's 79.
I said 78,900.
Never mind me.
You skipped number 27.
Okay, I'll go back.
That's what, that's what confused me.
The figures were so.
Okay.
Okay, so. Could we do, do the 28 now that it's been moved in second?
Yes, second.
Go back.
Okay.
Senior system.
Okay. So this is for 28?
For 28.
Rule call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
I will now back up to item 27. I move to approve a proposal for professional engineering services for the 2024 sewer rehab and design and construction with RJN Group not to exceed the amount of $79,100.
Second. Moved Alderman Violet and seconded by Alderman Key, roll call.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Violet?
Yes. I move to approve payment for professional engineering services with Lockwood, Andrews, and Newman for the 70th Avenue Lift Station rehabilitation in the amount of $12,375.
Second. Moved Alderman Violet and seconded by Alderman Key, any discussion, roll call.
Alderman Clifford?